Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. And at this time, would you please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds Sr., followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious Lord, we thank you for the beginning of a new year, new session for the council, a new start for our city, a fresh look. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege to serve. And as we serve the constituents of Portsmouth, we pray to the Lord that you will give us wisdom and that you will give us understanding that we will make right decisions. Bless this council, bless the citizens of Portsmouth, and bless us all that we might make it even greater. For we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
There are seven members of City Council present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting, December the 10th, 2012, a call meeting and a regular meeting of December the 11th, 2012, and a called and regular meeting on January the 2nd, 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
The minutes are adopted 7-0.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 13-21, Presentation. Presentation of Special Appeal Pens to Newly Appointed Board and Commissioned Members. If the following would join Vice Mayor Cherry at the Sergeant-at-Arms Desk. With the Economic Development Authority, Mr. Dean Thompson and Mr. Junius Thompson With the Planning Commission, Ms. Yolanda Thomas. And with the Supplemental Retirement Board, Ms. Laura Bealan.
Keep in mind, as you greet the Vice Mayor, we're going to look for someone out of your group to be the spokesperson to let us know why you're interested in serving, so we can use that for our citizens here and at home that might be interested in doing so. So, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First, I want to just congratulate and thank all you for being willing to give your time and your talents to the City of Portsmouth. You know, the council relies on the input from various boards and commissions to make the critical decisions for the city. And the fact that you're willing to serve is much appreciated by us all. So, I say that on behalf of the Mayor and the entire council.
Absolutely.
So, as the Mayor said, one of you lucky people get to tell us why you want to be on the board and what it means to you, and anything else you'd like to share with us.
Probably our left code.
Thank you. I just want to, we all want to say thank you to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, the members of City Council, and the citizens of Portsmouth. We all wanted to serve, to serve our city that we live in and enjoy the amenities here. And I think we all look forward to serving with integrity and volunteering our time to make the city the place that where everyone can enjoy and a place that we already enjoy.
As they take their seats, give them another round of applause. Thank you very much. Just want to say to those in the audience and those who may be watching at home, we still have other vacancies for boards and commissions. Please check our website or call the Clerk's office to find out which one may suit your needs. We always need some good help. Thank you.
Good. Very good. All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Public hearing. 13-22, Public Hearing on Use Permit Applications. Item A, UP 12-16, Williams Court Activity Center. Melvin Edwards of Unforgettable Soul Food Cafe requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with live entertainment at 4608 George Washington Highway. The property is owned by Washington Victory LLC. The Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be developed as a mixed-use corridor. It is located in the Williams Court Activity Center. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Fred Brusseau. I'm the interim planning director, and I'm before you tonight to present this application for a use permit for an entertainment establishment. Melvin Edwards, owner of Unforgettable Soul Food Cafe, is requesting an entertainment establishment use permit at 4608 George Washington Highway. This facility is located in the Williams Court I Shopping Center. The establishment is currently operating as a restaurant with ABC on-premise license and contains approximately 3,300 square feet. Mr. Edwards is requesting an entertainment establishment use permit to allow live entertainment, comedy shows, poetry readings, karaoke, special events, and live DJ music concentrating on jazz, funk, and R&B catering to a older, mature patron. On the right is the city zoning digital map showing that the property is currently zoned GMU or general mixed use, with the residential generally to the east and west. On the left is a picture of the front of the existing business, Unforgettable Soul Food. This is an aerial photo of the property with the food line located in the center of the shopping center. The red star on this aerial identifies the location of Unforgettable Soul Food. The Comprehensive Plan's generalized land use map designates the shopping center as part of the Williams Court Community Activity Center. This picture shows the shopping center from the ground. The applicant's business is located between the yellow lines on the photo. Again, food line is shown in the left of this photo for your reference. The proposed use is an entertainment establishment that will accommodate an additional 34 parking spaces to accommodate the number of patrons proposed by the applicant. Based on the current uses in Williams Court I Shopping Center, staff has determined that 335 parking spaces are required, which is substantially less than the 1,100 parking places available. Unforgettable Soul Foods is presently one unit, but would expand in the tenant space to the left if the permit requested is approved. This photo is of a view of the area around the shopping center along Victory Boulevard looking west. This photo is looking north along George Washington Highway. The property occupied by Williams Court I Shopping Center contains over 16 acres and over 88,000 square feet of retail commercial space. The center was developed in 1984 and includes a large parking lot with landscaped areas at the main entrance into the shopping center. Since the site was developed in 1984, there are a number of non-conforming site aspects in relation to the development standards contained in the 2010 zoning ordinance. These non-conforming site aspects would normally be addressed when investment into the building exceeds 25% of the assessed value, or when additional improvements are required as a condition of the entertainment establishment use permit. City Council has consistently applied conditions that require additional landscaping up to 2,500 square feet. And the reason we use that number is a full site plan is required with a lot of additional engineering when you exceed that number. At this point, staff has been unable to secure a commitment from the applicant or the owner that the additional landscaping will be provided. This slide shows the existing landscaping at the north end of the property. The island with the bushes is actually on the adjoining Williams Court II property. The island without bushes is on the Williams Court I. This photo shows the landscaping along the second entrance from George Washington Highway, which contains the required trees, but does not have the shrubbery as required by the ordinance. There are also no tree islands through the parking lot as required. These two slides help to identify some of the non-conforming, i.e. site, aspects which would be addressed with this application for an entertainment establishment. Staff has recommended a number of conditions which are located in the staff report, including a limit on occupancy subject to approval by the building official and a condition on additional landscaping. Staff finds at the time of preparing the report and at the time of the Planning Commission public hearing that the applicant had failed to agree to any site improvements, nor had they submitted a floor plan of the proposed facility. Because of those reasons, staff recommended denial of the use permit. At the December 4th, 2012 Planning Commission public hearing, the applicant failed to appear after being informed of the hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, for this item, the Planning Commission voted to recommend this request be denied by a vote of 7 to 0. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you haven't had any discussions with them since then?
We have tried phone, letter, going by the facility and asking and leaving notes, but have not had any contact at all.
What was the response from the neighbors?
Have had no response from neighbors either.
No, no? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 12-16. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12-16.
My name is John Carr. I live right across from George Washington Highway, from this particular area. And I was at the Planning Commission meeting and spoke about this. I have nothing against them having live entertainment over there. The difficulty I have with that is that on the other side of the driveway that you're looking straight at now, there is a bar and grill, which has expanded, and another club called the Vanity Nightclub and Bar, or Grill. It's turning into a row, and this place that wants this permit, by the way, has an ABC license. That's the part that disturbs me. It's turning into a row of bars. And with the property on the other side of this Williams Court II, having much interest from developers, and I've been to a meeting where one developer had presented something, the economy isn't allowing that to be developed. And it's a huge piece of property the city owns there. Wouldn't be conducive to them building very nice housing there and people wanting to live next to a row of bars. It would be kind of like we've had down at the other end of George Washington where there's a row of them. And the shopping center there has gone down considerably since then. And this is all just my opinion and what I've seen over the years. I'm a lifelong resident of Portsmouth, born and raised here. And I remember Crawford Street when it was a row of bars. And living downtown Portsmouth wasn't as much status as it was back then. Back then, living downtown Portsmouth wasn't the greatest place to live in some places. So, I ask the council to consider what's starting to develop as a mountain down there is forests, is places like this, being so bunched together and not, you know, spread out throughout communities. It makes it look like nothing but a bar row is what it appears to me. But, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, seeing no additional speakers to come forward, this public hearing is closed.
Move for denial.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, voting to deny this item, and you'll be voting electronically.
Okay.
This item is denied 7-0. Item B, UP 12-17, Williams Court Activity Center. Matt Bertschel requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment for a banquet and recreational facility at 4584 George Washington Highway. The property is owned by Washington Court II Associates LLC, of which Matt Bertschel is a principal. The Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be developed as a mixed-use corridor. It is located in the Williams Court Activity Center. Vision principle, robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and Mr. Bertschel is available if you have questions.
Sir?
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, again, good evening. Again, my name is Fred Brusseau from the Planning Department, and I'm before you tonight to present this application for a use permit for an entertainment establishment. Matthew Bertschel, owner of Williams Court II Shopping Center, is requesting an entertainment establishment use permit for a banquet facility to be called Portsmouth Events at 4584 George Washington Highway. Other uses would include weddings, private and holiday parties, charitable events, military change of command parties, and other special events. The proposed Portsmouth Events facility would be located in the space immediately north and next to Ollie's Bargain Outlet. This tenant space was previously used as a bingo hall. The establishment contains approximately 10,800 square feet and is calculated to have an occupancy load of 592 people. Portsmouth Events is proposing to operate on a 24-hour basis with entertainment activities limited to 10:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week. On the right is a section of the city's digital zoning map. Showing the property again is zoned GMU. To the north of the property is the new development known as Afton Green on the former Craddock High School site. To the east and west is existing residential development. The photo on the left shows the entire parcel, a portion of which is proposed for a banquet facility. The Comprehensive Plan's generalized land use map designates the William Court II Shopping Center as part of the Williams Court Community Activity Center. This aerial shows the entire parcel with the unit proposed for the banquet facility highlighted in yellow. This is the location of the entertainment establishment use permit that is being requested. The space proposed for this use is located, as we indicated earlier, next to Ollie's, and it's located in that area between the two yellow strips in this picture. The proposed Portsmouth Events facility, based on Parker requirements in the zoning ordinance, would require one parking space for every three people allowed per the fire marshal and building official. Based on an occupancy of 592 people, the entertainment establishment would require 198 spaces. The initial site plan submitted contained 434 parking places. An updated site plan submitted during the Planning Commission public hearing provided additional parking places. With the current additional parking places and the current uses within the shopping center, occupancy loading would have to be limited to 588, not the requested 592 occupancy load the applicant had requested. This is the north portion of the shopping center. This is a picture of George Washington Highway across from the shopping center, which is a combination of residential uses and businesses as shown in the picture. This is the landscaping of the main entrance to Williams Court Shopping Center. In addition to this landscaping, landscaping islands are provided at every other end of each row of spaces. This is the original, excuse me, this is the floor plan for the banquet facilities originally approved for a bingo facility. As mentioned, it contains 10,800 square feet and includes a large room and then two smaller rooms for smaller events. As we indicated before, this property was developed prior to the zoning ordinance that's currently in effect. An additional landscaping would be needed to bring it into conformity with the current code. The applicant and owner has agreed to provide 2,500 square feet of landscaping on this site. At the December 4th, 2012 Planning Commission public hearing, the applicant appeared and, as we indicated, provided the additional parking layout. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission voted to recommend this request be approved by a vote of 7 to 0. This concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the sake of the public and those watching at home, these are basically in the same footprint this in the previous one.
No, sir.
They're not?
Williams Court I Shopping Center is that part of what we all think is one big shopping center, but it is a part of that shopping center that contains the food line store. It is broken pretty much into two separate buildings by a separation of about 100 feet. And that second area, which contains Ollie's, is Williams Court II.
Go back to that plan view, if you would.
The separation is what, from one to the other?
It's about 100 feet.
100 feet. So, it's basically the same?
Everybody that would look at it thinks it's one big shopping center.
Yeah, same footprint, basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, what I want you to do is explain the primary differences for those people in the audience and those at home, because you recommend approval on one and not on the other. And if y'all follow me.
Yes, sir.
So, it won't be confusing, this is why.
Most happy to do that, sir.
Yeah.
In the previous application, our recommendation was based on the applicant's refusal to provide any additional landscaping to bring the site more in compliance with the code and a failure to provide an adequate floor plan to show how the interior of the building would be laid out. In this case, the applicant has agreed to provide 2,500 square feet of additional landscaping on a parcel that is more compliant than the previous site and has provided a very clear, detailed scale drawing to show the seating layouts of the entire facility.
Thank you. No comments from the neighbors on this one either?
There were some comments, but they were different in that this was not an existing restaurant. It was going to be looked at as a banquet facility rather than a restaurant open 24 hours with the ABC. I'm certain they would be having an ABC license here for some facilities, but there is a difference with this type of facility. One thing I would point out that we wanted to make certain that this does not become a reoccurring nightclub that the same person rents every day or every night. And so, the conditions contained in the staff report prevent that from happening.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Brusseau. And looking at the staff briefing, I didn't notice a financial impact reference, you know, the employment, number of employees, the tax contribution. That's always a pet peeve of me, you know, large or small, I like to know what is it going to do for us? What's their contribution either to the employment base or to the tax base of our city? What is that going to be?
Without the booking information, we were not able to provide that because their occupancy in there is going to be based on the number of booking facilities that they would have. The applicant is here and may be able to provide some information about what they anticipate the number of bookings would be. But since they are not providing the food service that you would normally have at a restaurant or a place with ABC, this was a little bit more difficult to obtain, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it can certainly be ascertained by the property tax. They'll be paying property tax, capital improvements, whatever they got going on. The other thing that I noticed in there that concerned me a little bit, had nothing to do with their application, but it was used as a reference. Three Cheers already has an ABC license, and they well-run establishment.
Yes, sir.
But it also mentioned that Rumors was under consideration. But this council denied Rumors, I want to say, a couple months ago based on ABC violations before they actually had an ABC permit. So, I just wanted to make that correction on the staff report.
Yes, sir. When the staff report was written, it was about two months ago when the staff report was written.
Okay.
And council had not taken the action at that time when the staff report was repaired.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that hadn't got a second life.
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Members of council, there are no additional registered speakers on this item.
Move adoption.
Second.
Council members, if we could slow me down a little bit. This is a public hearing on item UP 12-17. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12-17. Hearing no speakers come forward, members of council, it's back in your hands.
Move adoption.
Sir?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved 7-0. City Managers Report 13-23, Adoption of an Ordnance to Amend Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 4-33.1D thereof pertaining to registration of dangerous dogs. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 13-24, Adoption of an Ordnance to Amend Chapter 35 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 35-15 thereof to require the payment of real estate taxes prior to the issuance of a business license. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 13-25, Adoption of a Resolution, Authorizing Application for Federal Funding Assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for Capital Improvements at Paradise Creek Nature Park. Vision principle, bold new directions. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take just a minute to do what I did in the work session and acknowledge that the executive director of the Elizabeth River Project, Marjorie Mailfield Jackson, is in the room. If she'd please stand so we can publicly thank her for all of the work that the Elizabeth River Project has done to make the Elizabeth River swimmable, fishable, and swimmable. This park, if you haven't been by it, is, the Paradise Creek Park is on Victory Boulevard, sort of across the street from the Wheel Operator Plant. It's 40 acres of park that the Elizabeth River Project has raised in the neighborhood of about $12 million in private funding and will basically give this park to the citizens of Portsmouth, and the city will be operating it in the future. There's 11 acres of wetland that the Virginia Port Authority has built as part of that park. There will, there are trails, there's all sorts of great things for the citizens to enjoy. If you want to make a donation to the Elizabeth River Project, I got to get the commercial in. You can go to elizabethriver.org and make a contribution. This is a wonderful way for the park to partner with the city. This grant application that the city is applying for will not involve any city tax dollars. We will be repaid with federal funds and private funds, but the city has to go about securing the grant from the federal government. So, it's a wonderful partnership. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. And we do want to encourage everyone to go out absolutely. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New Business, 13-26, Boards and Commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of City Council, we need to approve the following appointment. Mayor, members of City Council, we need to approve the following appointment for our City Manager, John Rowe. Appointment to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, Community Policy and Management Team, an alternate to the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads, and an alternate to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 13-27, Item submitted by Councilmembers. Adoption of an Ordinance by City Council hereby exempting the annual Buffalo Riders of, excuse me, Buffalo Riders Parade of Horses from an additional city expense in accordance with City Code Section 22-12. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call. And just for City Council's information, the public was provided a copy of the ordinance, and it was updated on the city's website in time for the public to be aware of this ordinance. So you're just adopting the ordinance.
Okay.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. Are there any other items to be submitted by Councilmembers?
Let me start off. I've got a couple of items, but first of all, I see a Boy Scout troop in the back. I believe it's Troop 212. Would you please stand and be recognized? We always like to recognize our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that visit us.[744.32][744.32](applause). Would you like to share where you're from?
We're actually from over in Chesapeake, Alderman County, Mississippi.
Oh, welcome. Thank you for coming abroad. Thank you, welcome. Secondly, last Saturday afternoon, I and Councilwoman Randall attended the 50th wedding anniversary for former Mayor Bernard Griffin. And I got to tell you again, that is truly a love story. It was really a delight to see all of the friends and coworkers and folks that knew Mr. and Mrs. Griffin through the years to come up and speak and talk on his public service and what he did as a private citizen. Just amazing, the things and the people that that family and that couple has helped. And it was an honor for us to be there, and I want to thank Councilwoman Randall for her fine comments to former Mayor Griffin on some of the things that he's done for this city here. And I wasn't privy to those things, and being mayor 50 years and the mayor's 49, I thought it would be in order to have someone that could speak from authority. And so that was great. And so we want to congratulate Mayor Griffin and the 50th anniversary. Okay. Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize the fact that my lovely wife, Yvette, and members of the Delta Sigma Sigma Portsmouth Alumni Association Committee are here tonight, taking a part in their civic activities.
Okay. Would you please stand? Welcome, each one of you.[848.12][848.12](applause). Okay, anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 13-28, Report on Pending Items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on December 11th, 2012. There were 14 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on December 11th, 2012. Five of the speakers required action by staff. Barbara Williams expressed concern about the current refuse fee charged by the City of Portsmouth. Ms. Williams has been advised by staff that the refuse fee is a set fee and not based on the number of people in the household. Ms. Williams also would like the crosswalk near the bus stop to be repainted. To date, she has not provided the location of the crosswalk. Also, Mrs. Williams asked for help with PRHA to provide living assistance for her sister. Mrs. Williams' sister has submitted an application to PRHA. Dolores Knight was concerned that the fire department did not have a representative at the last Craddock Civic League meeting. Starting in January 2003, sorry, 2013, the fire department, as well as the police department and area inspector, will be attending the meetings. The second concern involves staff and City Council not attending the Wheel Abraider Citizen Advisory Committee meeting, which is held quarterly. Staff has already met with the General Manager of Wheel Abraider to, one, build a positive working relationship, and to discuss ongoing issues at the plant. In addition, staff did attend the quarterly meeting, which was held on December 13th, 2012. The third concern raised by Ms. Knight was the addition of an outdoor basketball court at the George Washington Park. Staff will meet with the Civic League, as well as the George Washington Park neighbors, to ascertain the desire of the membership. The first meeting will be with the Craddock Civic League on January 2nd, 2013. Lamar Price expressed his concern about the lack of a recreation center in Churchland. The park's Recreation and Leisure Master Plan, Action Item 3.4 identifies the need for a recreation facility in Churchland, and Item 5.1 recommends shared facility use agreements with schools to serve Churchland and other areas of the city. Staff will continue to pursue this option with the schools. Devon Contral expressed her concern about the Click It or Ticket campaign conducted by the police department from May 21st, 2012 through June 3rd, 2012, at the Portsmouth Public Schools. This is a national campaign to increase motor safety through the use of seat belts. The operation that was conducted at the schools complied with all applicable case law with prior approval and observation by a representative of the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney. Kathy Shapley asked City Council to consider changing the current zoning code to allow hens within the city of Portsmouth. Staff is currently reviewing other cities within the Commonwealth and will provide to City Council with an update at an upcoming work session. And I'd also like to provide you with the following update on the next two items. At the council meeting on October 9th, 2012, Leslie Smith with Bond Secures Hospice expressed concern about the current policy the City of Portsmouth follows when responding to a fatality of a person within hospice care. As of January 2013, hospice providers have been informed to call for EMS and/or police if a response is needed or desired. If the hospice personnel are capable of managing the situation without assistance, no notification is necessary. The Bond Secures Hospice Manager, as well as the Portsmouth Fire Department, Portsmouth Police Department, and the 911 dispatch operators have been made aware of this change. At the council meeting on November 13th, 2012, Kevin Kelly requested Cedar Road be reviewed for adding reflector strips in areas where there are no sidewalks or lights. Staff is currently assembling specifications for restriping portions of Cedar Lane and West Norfolk Road, and also replacement of pavement reflectors in various locations within the corridor. The specs should be completed by the end of January 2013 and sent out for procurement in February 2013. Once bids are received, installation will depend on the weather conditions. This concludes my report.
13-29, Non-Agenda Speakers. Mayor Wright?
Yeah. Let me, first of all, read this before we get into non-agenda speakers. City Council has had a longstanding practice of providing non-agenda speakers with an opportunity to address matters of public concern as part of council's regular agenda. Council rules allow each speaker up to five minutes to express such concerns, and on a case-by-case situation, a speaker may be granted additional time to complete his or her sentence or presentation. This portion of the meeting has been televised in the past. City Council has always encouraged the public to contact city staff and to address city council regarding matters of public concern. However, some non-agenda speakers, instead of using the televised form for the primary purpose of informing council, are instead abusing this opportunity for the purpose of displaying unprofessional conduct and matters that are not of a public concern. In order for us to refocus the non-agenda speaker portion of the council's agenda to a communication by the speaker to the council, City Council has decided to no longer televise the non-agenda speaker portion of this meeting, beginning with tonight's meeting. Any citizen who wished to address the council on a matter that is not part of the City Council's regular agenda may continue to do so under the same five-minute council rule. The only change that will be that the citizen's comment will not be televised by the city. Matters that require a response will either be addressed at the same meeting or made the subject of a report to council at a later meeting. This has been and continues to be City Council's practice to provide a prompt response through the City Embusman, Bernadette Hogg, to each citizen who appears before council with a matter of public concern. Again, we've had discussions about this in our work session. There has been a long concern with all of us with the tone and the matter in which some of our agenda, non-agenda speakers come up and speak. There is nothing here that anyone on this council want to censor or stop you from saying. We do think, as a new council and a new year, to halt this, we have sent you notification well in advance, so you could come here tonight, like you are. We have a community meeting next week at IC Norcom.
Yes.
On the 15th. We are encouraging dialogue. We want you to come and speak. There are a lot of pros and cons, and again, no one here is trying to censor anyone or do anything other than make sure we control our tone and make sure we continue to provide a service to all of our citizens. We have to consider all of our citizens, not the few here that want to do things that may not be above board. And again, your suggestions and comments and feedback is requested in these meetings, so we can reassess and take a deep breath and look at what we're doing. Because for the most part, we all have enjoyed, and I think most of you and most of the people that have called me, have been extremely concerned about how we're going down this road of every meeting. There's two or three that probably shouldn't say what they say, and the mayor probably should have done something, and the mayor didn't. And the mayor or none of us want to get into trying to crack the whip. We're all responsible people and citizens. All of this belongs to all of us. We're all taxpayers. But we do have to make sure, sometimes we stop and take a look at what we're doing and where we're going. Folks, just look around this country at some of the things that are going on, all because people are not civil and people continue to push the envelope. We can get our points across. We can disagree without being disagreeable, making personal attacks and things of that nature. So at this time, Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our conversation in the work session, and I won't repeat that. But with your permission, I'd like to remind my council colleagues and the citizens about our Rules of Order and Procedure as amended December 13th of 2011 with regard to non-agenda speakers, if I may.
Absolutely.
In Section 5, it reads decorum and order. No language or conduct detrimental to the function of the meeting shall be permitted. The presiding officer shall maintain the dignity of the meeting, preserve decorum and order, and shall call out of order any person violating these rules of order and procedure. Applause shall be permitted only during awards and presentations. During all other agenda items, a speaker may request an expression of consensus, support, or opposition by calling for a show of hands or for members of the audience to silently stand. No citizen shall be permitted to make personal accusations or attacks against any other citizen. The presiding officer shall decide all questions of order without debate, which shall be subject to the appeal to the council by any member thereof. A question of order will take precedence over the questions giving rise to it. The Chief of Police or his designee shall act as a sergeant-at-arms at all city council meetings. The sergeant-at-arms shall, under the direction of the presiding officer, have charge of the council chamber and shall prevent any interruption of the business of council by disorder within or without. I think if we'd all followed this real rule, Mayor, we wouldn't be in the conversation we're in right now.
Thank you. And again, just to reiterate, I don't think there's anyone up here that have a problem with you disagreeing and telling us your views. We want to be able to do this. We want to air this. There are a lot of positives, and we don't want to get into the business of penalizing the positives because of the few negatives. And yeah, with your feedback and some of our discussion over the next couple of weeks, then maybe we can come to some happy meeting. It could very well be that the mayor should be a little bit more controlling and cut people off, remind them that they're in violation, and if that is the result of what we do, then that will be it. We, as a council, will support that. But it also gives us an opportunity to hear from you, the citizens. We have a lot of people that watch this. We have a lot of people that don't understand the rules. Some people think this is a debate, that you come up, ask us questions, we tell them back. That is not the purpose. The purpose is you to bring a matter to the council. You have a right to address the council with your concern. And we will, if we can answer it that night, do it. If not, we will assign it to staff to get back with you. And I have had people, and most of us folks, call, "Why don't you answer a lot of these things?" We are creating some things that only we, as a team, you and us, can handle, so we can move forward in a professional manner. So again, we want to put that disclaimer out. We really want to hear from you. We really do. I'm glad this room's packed. I hope you're here for that. I hope you'll be at IC Norcom next week for that, because there are times that we need to have dialogue, speak to each other, and understand what we do and why we do it. So if there are citizens at home watching this, and citizens not quite understanding what's going on, maybe we can do a little bit more on the educational side. But again, it needs to always be civil, because we're all working in the best interest of Portsmouth and want to make sure everyone is heard. And if we can do something, we will most certainly do it. There isn't a person up here that won't do that. So not that, you know, we want to tone it down, but we want to make sure that we're doing that in a professional manner. This broadcast goes all over Hampton Roads. Okay, Mr. Moody, you got a question or a comment?
No, no question, Mayor. I will say one thing, nobody at home's watching this, because the plug's already been pulled. In a body like this, silence indicates consent. I said earlier at the public work session, I don't agree with this. I think there are other ways, just like our council rules, as Councilwoman Simmons just read, that's how you control discord and people who want to unleash a personal attack. Also, Robert's Rules of Order and council rules state that the mayor chairs the meeting and consequently has the gavel, and the chair of a meeting can certainly use that gavel to call somebody out of order. I pointed out earlier tonight that recently, Virginia Beach Council meeting, a former elected official who was out of order apparently, got removed from the council by the sergeant-at-arms, which we certainly have a very capable sergeant-at-arms that could remove somebody. So I think it's a punitive action. I think people at home who cannot come down to this meeting for various reasons, either the work schedule or the fact that they don't like to drive at night, I think they're very interested in knowing what's going on in their community. And I would say only a small portion of the speakers that come to this council are out of line, even if they're out of line. I don't know that they're out of line, but even negative. I think most people who come here, and this is an intimidating format, so I don't think anybody really enjoys getting behind here. I've been on that side way back when, when I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And my knees were kind of rattling when I came up there and spoke. I'm not the most comfortable public speaker. So I don't think people normally like this venue and to waste their time to come here and speak. So I think there are other ways that this body can control people who we deem to be out of line or who we deem to be unleashing a personal attack, other than a punitive measure. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else on this matter? All right. Madam Clerk?